I'd like to welcome everybody today. Thank you for attending. I'm going to call the order, the meeting to order 2:00 P.M., please. Roll call.
Mr. Barber. Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Dr. Miller. Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
All right, moving on to number three, are there any agenda items to be added? Here it is now, do I hear an approval of the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion on the approved agenda? Agenda, all in favor, let it be known by raising the right hand. Thank you. New business. Review of the school division's budget request, I hand this to the school division.
What do you think, President? I want to do that name.
Yes, for your library.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, members of board supervisors, Mr. High School members, we appreciate the opportunity to meet with you today to share our budget request for the upcoming school year. I have with us, with me today, Mr. Steve Mayton, who is the Assistant Superintendent for Administration, Mrs. Bronn, Paymore, who is the Associate Superintendent for Support Services, Dr. Jeff Hurley, Assistant Superintendent for Operations, Mrs. Teresa Petty, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Mrs. Tracy Willey, Director of Finance, and Mrs. Janet Hancock, Clerk for the Board. So again, we thank you all for taking your time, we know it's very valuable, although this coming year is very busy for each one of you all. But if you would allow us to share some good news about our school divisions as we talk about our budget as well, we'd like that opportunity. So I would like to move through some slides pretty quickly about what's going on in our school division first, what you all, show you all your return on investment, if you would like. First slide, we think it's been county schools equals achievement. We have many slides that we omitted just because of time, but we just want to kind of share with you some quick points about what's taking place in our school division. First, we have information regarding schools that have earned awards, and these are state awards. We have six schools that have earned the performance awards from the governor and the state superintendent. These schools are in the top 10 percent of schools. There were 202 schools recognized in the state, and there were approximately 2,000 schools in the state. So we feel very honored to have six of those schools there, okay? We also, as we shared with you last year, we have three Blue Ribbon Schools, and we have another school that we think, maybe you or two will probably be our fourth school. So we feel very good about that as well, that's a national recognition based on achievement as well as schools that are come from poverty, that's why they consider that in the criteria for selection. Pennsylvania County Schools equals return on investment, I hope that you all see that, hope you feel that way for our division. We work extremely hard to ensure that our students do well, and they represent Pennsylvania County in a good light. So our first slide shows you all, we administer 28 assessments, Standards of Learning Assessments each year, and on 25 of 28, our scores are above the state average. If you look at the different tests, kind of have a table at the top of this slide with a graph beside it, those are, the first table are our elementary tests. If you look, there's a state versus division scores there, in every, on every score at the elementary level, Pennsylvania County Schools scored above state average. And if you look, considerably, considerably a good distance above state average. And the graph shows that there's only, in one test there, did we even come close, and that was the Virginia Studies test, 86 versus 85. The bottom graph shows middle school scores, and there are two areas in the middle school scores where we dropped below the state average, and one is the seventh grade reading, and the other is a citizen economics, and when we were 85 versus 86 percent, but the rest were above the state average. And then our end of course, and if you look at the scores for the division, our scores are really strong scores there for our high school students. Only one area in biology did we drop below the, and most of them are 85 and above scores. And then this compares us locally to the divisions that surround us. We have Pennsylvania County, and this is our, these are elementary scores here on this graph. The first column is Pennsylvania County, the second is Dammel City, Henry, Halifax, Campbell, and Franklin. And anywhere you see a yellow box, that's where Pennsylvania County exceeded the other county schools. So that's elementary. Next is middle school, five of 10 were above. And if you look at allotment, we're tied with Campbell, we're tied with grade six reading, grade seven reading, grade eight reading, at 82, 84, and 78 percent. And then we're tied with Franklin as well for grade seven reading, okay? And at the high school level, again, the strongest scores at our high school level, again, just compare this, our division with those same other school divisions there. So our students are doing extremely well. So on those 29 tests, Pennsylvania County was top, the top score on 20 of those 29 tests, when compared with those divisions that surround Pennsylvania County. SAT scores, and this compares us nationally. Our scores going back to 2012, if you look to the far right, would be the most recent score, 16, 17, and 17, and 18. And I have the national average at the bottom, and the top box is the verbal, the reading, SAT, the bottom is the math. And if you look at how our scores have gone up over the years, and in fact, on four of the eight in 17, 18, we were above the national average. So that would be about right, so we're doing about what the national average is, what other school divisions are doing across the nation. Our goal's to be above that. Pennsylvania County equals community. Our buildings are used many hours of the day and on weekends, and we, our board has been very gracious to open up to other groups, and these are some of the groups that use our buildings there. And then Pennsylvania County means equals efficiency. We have 21 schools in the division, we have 200 buses, bus routes, about 195 bus routes, about 220 buses. We travel about 2 million miles. We have close to 1,640, I think that may be a little bit wrong, about 600 people we pay each month. And so, we have new school, Victory Academy here in Chatham as well, that we'll talk about a little later. If you look at the division, how we kind of stack up as far as size, again, we're the 30th largest as far as student populations, and we're a large school division, and we're the largest geographic. Of our cost as far as for transportation, electricity, I think about $1,000 per student goes to these three costs, when you add them up. In the parentheses there is the amount per student. The $7.90 is the cost per student for transportation, and so forth there on this slide. Okay, we'll be updated in a little bit. Oh, okay. 808. 808 is the transportation costs as a new for this, that was last year, this is this year, $51 for fuel oil, and $211 for electricity costs. So this is over about $1100 per child now, for those costs. We have, I believe, about 200 buses. That kind of, that table there gives you the breakdown by age, and gives you the number of miles, average miles for those buses in those, into those age groups. This slide tells us, just this slide is that we have to purchase 10 buses a year to be on a 20-year replacement cycle in order to keep up. If we get behind, that really puts us behind as far as paying for buses. A bus cost about $85,000, and so 10 buses, $85,000 just to replace 10 buses. Did not buy any this year. We have a lease, we have three leases out there, and so a lease will be up this year that we're going to utilize for buses to receive any requests. How do we compare when we look at the state and we look at surrounding counties as far as funding? Our composite index is .24, which is, that's that calculation that determines the ability to pay. And we compare with our surrounding cities and counties, Henry is .22, Patrick is .23, Dammel .25, Campbell .28. And then on this slide, I also have the adjusted gross income, much recent adjusted income that I could find, per locality. I have local per pupil, now maybe, maybe not exactly right on adjusted gross income there, but local per pupil, total per pupil, and then percent above SOQ. So we're 1/16th as far as composite index, or 1/20th of 132 at the bottom for local per pupil. We are 1/27th of 132 at the bottom, total per pupil. And then the last column is percent above SOQ. The standards of quality is what is required funding. We are 15.62 percent above SOQ based on the last metric that's provided by the state department, and that's 1/25. This kind of, same, same information, but in different tables, this kind of compares us with total per pupil. You know, we're at 97.42, Patrick is behind at 9600, and Markswell is at 12,000. Dammel City is at 11,600 per student.
We gave the school system obviously a substantial increase in local monies last year.
This year.
In the current year, so that is not reflected in that data yet, correct?
That data, actually, the per pupil data is, the most current is June of 2017.
So our, so our average based on the state shouldn't rise?
It could, yes. It would be different, yeah, but that's the most current information out there, it's called Table 15, it comes from our annual school report, and they have not completed June 30 of 18 yet, so.
So it's based on what we, what we know, I guess, okay? And then if we did comparisons, if we were to take total pupil of Dammel, at 11,605, and we based it on our numbers, we subtracted out, you know, what we, we would have 16 million dollars that we could work with in the division. If we took Campbell as at the bottom of this graph, and we received what they get per pupil, subtract out our number, we'd get about 2 million extra dollars per year based on those, those dollars, on those figures that we got from 2017. Then local per pupil, and the same thing with that. The difference between Dammel City and its own county is a $731 there, okay? So the difference, the same population there, compare that with the surrounding counties, the difference that would be in our budget. And then this is required local effort. The average required local effort in the state is 68 percent, and that's the pie, the kind of, there are 12, 12 divisions that are less than 20 percent. There are 23 that fall between 20 percent and 49.9 percent above SOQ. There are 31 that are between 15 and 75 percent. There are 31 that are between 75 and 99 percent, and that 37 of us above 100 percent. And we are at 15 percent, so we would use that bottom slide to target it. And then that's just the lo, surrounding counties and where they fall. Campbell is 106 percent above SOQ, Henry's 22 percent, McIlburn's 29 percent, Franklin's 60 percent, Halifax 80, and so forth. And the state average is about 69 percent above SOQ. And then we did a comparison, this is, this is, this is current information about where our teachers fall, the salaries, and this was with a one-third of the compensation study done, and how we fall. And first of all, the compensation study really addressed the early part of our salary scale, so you'll see how closely our early salaries are to state averages and surrounding counties, but as more senior teachers are falling and falling behind, and that's what this graph here shows. State average is blue, and Pennsylvania County is red. And you can't see this table here, but state average is across the top, and it's 41,000 to about 61,000. And we have listed, this is Region 6 salaries, and if you look the bottom, kind of gives you in a nutshell what this table is telling us. The average salary for Region 6 is about 39,69, and we're at 39,563. So the difference for us, we're at, to the good, about $500 there for our teachers with no experience. For teachers with five years' experience, we're about right at the average, we're about $260 ahead. But then when you get to year 10, we fall behind, and we're behind as much as $7,000 by a third of the year. So our teacher, our more senior teachers are not making what others in this area are making, okay? And this is, that's the graph there, I think we just showed the other region. And this next table is comparing counties that touch us. And so first, we are $92 to the starting salary compared to Campbell, Franklin, Henry, Halifax, Dammel, and McIlburn. And then five years, we are 290 ahead. 10 years, we're 92. I believe 15 years, we're at 769, but then at year 20, we fall behind, and we stay behind in those later years in social services. And that's what our compensation study is trying to target, and that's one of our, that's our first priority this evening with you all, is to initiate this second one-third of our compensation study.
Yes, so the city of Dammel, specifically, do these figures include compensation study that they put in last year?
Or with this current year, no, this is one year back. We don't have current year information, so.
So this current year, we would be quite a bit behind the state.
Quite a bit behind the city of Dammel.
They included around 12 percent of this.
Does this down include the raises that were given after we increased the county's local, the local amount for the current year?
Not this year, but the year before, was when we implemented the one-third of our salary study, but that was mostly with state money. So this year, with the local money that we received, we gave everybody a step increase. But this, that information is the previous year, not the current year, because we, you know, that hasn't been tallied yet, obviously.
Then let's share some good news. Victory Academy, we greatly appreciate you all providing the authority for our use. Victory Academy wanted to share some savings information with you. We estimate that prior to FY 17, 18, we saved 1.6 million dollars, and I think this fall, we estimate that we saved $395,000. This program consists of two teachers, two aides, two assistants. We have a program supervisor there, and we shifted staff in the division, so did not, we did not take on any additional cost on the program. We give, do some maintenance types of things there, but we did, we've done this without increasing our budget. And then we have a program, I don't know if you talked about before, but this is our star program, this is our autism program, it's called, it's at Twin Springs. Next year, we plan to move to Chatham and, and in the past, kids with autism, if they were fatherless families, they didn't go out to the day or residential. I think, this has been 40 years ago, about 40 years ago, decided this is probably keeping here, we have the resources to work with, and it's worked. And so if you look at the savings, the savings is about 3 million dollars, those children, we have two classes at the Twin Springs, was it K3 and 45?
K2.
45 there.
Twin Springs and Chatham.
And Chatham Middle, we have a middle school program, so they're moving the elementary program to Chatham LNF here. So quite a savings there in-house, and we've done that really on the shoespring with staffing that we had, we gave them the special skills to handle this program. Any questions regarding, just a snapshot of what's going on in schools? Career technical center, we have exit programs, we have 15 programs there. In our schools, we have career technical programs going on, we have our career connections lab that's just opened up in Chatham Middle School, we're going to plan to expand that, we give Virginia brand and some other grants to all our middle schools next, next year or the year after. We've got a lot of good things going on across our county. Any questions with me as I wrap up my piece on the presentation? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to talk to you about the money. Is that what you want to talk about?
I can see I'm jumping to Joey.
So excited. Dig deep in your pockets, okay? All right, so the first slide here, this is just to give you a snapshot of our current budget. Our budget this year is $89.9 million. As we stand right now, that'll probably change a little bit as the year goes on, but I just have a breakdown there. 60.9 million from state, 8.7 federal, the 18.3 from U and 2 million from other funding. The state funding, the majority of that would be our tax dollars that we receive, and then we call them entitlements, which is money that we receive from the state. A lot of that has rules and regulations attached to it. Let, we use that money obviously for operations, and as you see at the bottom, 79 percent of our budget is tied to personnel, so the majority of our funds do go to salary and benefits. The federal funding, those allotments, they are definitely designated to specific areas. That includes the money that we receive for the National School Lunch Program, as well as the majority of those funds are coming in from Title I and from Title 6B, which are the special education population as well as underserved population based on, call me specific, on the Title I schools. The other funding there, the $2 million, one mil, a change in that for this year, $1 million of that is Dammel Community College. There are some changes going on in that program, that's our dual enrollment program, so that's our gifted and our rotational students. And that's the tuition that in the past, we have paid to the TCC, and then they have reimbursed us that. That program is changing, so really that million dollars is not going to be needed for this year, so there's no longer, we're not paying the bill and them reimbursing us, we're just paying a little local piece, which is significantly less than that amount, so. So, kind of hard to see this one. This is, you should be familiar with this snapshot, this is generally what we send you, just breaking down our revenues and expenditures by category. It shows the sales tax, state, federal, local, and other funds. And this just gives you our budget for 15, 16, 16, 17, the 17, 18, I've adjusted, and then, when it says 18, 19 amended, that's because the General Assembly came back in June after we had passed our budget, and we did make an amendment in July to show you the $89.9 million that we're working with currently. I did provide some information, so before we dig into these priorities that I had sent to Ken earlier, maybe first part of February, I sent up some information this week, first of the week, in the last week, some information on ADM, and then our state entitlements, our federal money, and the local appropriations, to kind of show where that, that has gone over the years. And our ADM is definitely, it is declining, but as Dr. Jones said, because of our, our large land area and where our schools are, even, you know, last year we were down 169 students from budget, which was huge. It made quite a dent in our budget, we had to go back to the drawing board and cut out over a million dollars once the school year had started. But even with 169 students, which is a very large number, when you spread them throughout the county and throughout different grades, you know, you can't really do away with a classroom teacher. You know, you might have five kids in one school, and they could all be from different, you know, a different grade. So even though we lost a lot of money, we really couldn't reduce staff to, you know, to make up for that. So I just wanted to impress upon you our number one basic priority, which is Phase Two of our compensation study. In 17, 18, we were fortunate to be able to implement Phase One. Evergreen, the company that did our study, of course, recommended a two-year implementation, which means the second part of that was then done this fiscal year, 18, 19. We were not able to do that, even enter, even do another third for 18, 19. We did step everybody, so that did help a little bit, it did help to move in the right direction, but we're nowhere close to implementing this study. And you can see, when you were looking at that salary information that was gathered, it's our veteran employees that are really suffering here. It's our, it's our faithful, the employees that have been with us for a long time, because, you know, we were much lower in their salaries than our surrounding divisions, and, you know, they have a lot to gain from implementing this study. They are many steps behind from where they really should be today. And that wrote down somewhere, I think it was on one of the salary pages, but, you know, our veteran teachers are making around $51,000, $52,000 for their place right now on the study. If they were actually on Step 30 with that 30 years of experience on our scale that was developed by this company, they would be at $59,000. So we would be right in line with the region, and even a lot closer to the state average. So it's just very important, it's a priority of our board, I can tell you it's a priority of the staff, you know, to get this third year implemented. We need about $2.4 million to do that. If we're looking at the governor's version right now, we're looking at about $1.9 million in compensation money. The senate version is a couple of thousand dollars less, I mean, but about the same amount. The House is doing a little, playing a little game there with the 5 percent, they're actually pushing that off to January of 2020, so in essence, that would make it just a 4 percent for the year, or for the two years of the biennium, which cut the money about, almost $400,000. So, no matter what happens at that level, just in order for us to be able to do this next one-third of our study, we're going to need some local dollars to help us do that. Even if we can implement another third next year, that's the third year into our study, that means, that's two years, there's no cost of living that applies to that salary scale. So if we can even get that next one-third in next year, we still have another third to do. We're three years out now, there's been no cost of living applied to that scale, so we're, you know, we're digging a hole deeper and deeper. So we just want you to know how important that is to us, that is our number one priority. I'm not going to go through all of this. If you get halfway down, you can see that there are some capital items on there. I believe they are on the capital improvement plan that you have, information that we submitted, but these are needs, and we just want to keep them out front with you. There are several capital items in there, there are some operational items in there, our maintenance, our operating maintenance budget during the recession years, we cut a million dollars out of that. Three different years, we cut $300,000 out, or whatever, whatever makes that come up to a million dollars. It was, I think, 400 one year, 300 a couple of years. We've not been able to put that money back in, and our buildings are definitely suffering for that. We're trying to do some year-end items here, but, each year, but it's just not enough to make up for that type of money. And you'll see just some other items there, a playground at Victory Academy, you know, that's elementary students out there, so, and these are just, these are definitely some needs. The bus lease we talked about, the bus lease that we have that's coming due, it's not enough to purchase those 10 regular school buses and the two specially equipped, so we would need to add about 100. school buses and the two specially equipped. So we would need to add about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to that lease in order to get back on that replacement cycle. But thankfully, you know, we do have some money coming up. So we will definitely be buying whatever we can. Anything on there that you have any questions about or?
I got a question. Supervisor, can you tell us where we stand on capital improvement budget? Are we making plans to have one? Do we have one yet?
If I'm not mistaken, do you have that in place? I think the county administrator's working that in, aren't you?
Yes, sir. But we certainly have C I P and have our eye toward the major needs of the county over a decent amount of time. But as far as funding that plan, it's catch and sketch came. And, you know, Kim and I are deep into this project. We're very, very familiar with capital items in this project.
I've never been along with, just like, if you look at this, our new schools, our new elementary schools are twenty-three years old. And they're beginning to have capital needs. And it's going to continue and get worse. I've been around here long enough to know that's what got us into trouble back in the seventies. When we took, the best healthcare personnel could not maintain our buildings and capital stuff. And it's going to come a time that we don't develop a capital improvement budget and take this out of our operating, then we're going to be looking at bond reparations to do anything we should do.
This, this may be more of a superintendent on the board in this world. There are so many proposed deals now in the House and Senate that are affecting safety and relationships of buildings. And do you foresee any of those that could positive, have a positive impact on your ability to address any of these issues in any way? Or any things you have planned to use that money for that may end up being compensated with these new studies and you use it somewhere else?
You know, while those deals are well-intentioned, I don't know that there's going to be dollars enough to meet the needs across the state. So I, I, I don't know that we, for a county on doing that, to supply what we currently have in the school.
I don't think there's any money to address items that are on our file or something.
I think Bill Stanley addressed that. Tried to address it in the bill. I don't think it made it, as I recall. I was trying to track that bill. One of, one of the bills I'm worried about, Mr. Warren, was one that was going to increase our, increase the need for. Yeah, that's right, yeah. And, and they were, we would have to hire guidance counselors. And like the state typically does, they don't, they're tamed to do it, but don't fund it. So we've been watching that one pretty close because if that would very negatively impact us if that deal goes through.
How about House Bill twenty-one ninety-two? Does that going to impact you any of, if you? It's public school building and facilities modernization.
Are we getting, that's the grant money?
Yeah, well, I'm sure it does have some grant money tied to it.
If, if, if it comes as grant money, it will help us. If it comes as a loan, as a, we have to.
Because we've been getting a hundred thousand dollars a year for how many years? Four? Five? Right, for security.
This year, they go up.
It may go up. And we do have to match that. I think twenty-five thousand is what is our part of the match on the hundred thousand dollars. And we're using our energy demand program, internet program. We're using the money from that for the match. And we've been able to, I mean, security cameras, key lights, all kind of make at all of our school locations. I think that we feel like our school locations are in very good shape as far as being.
We're in much better.
Much better taken where five years ago for sure. But all of that money is for those locations. And you can see we have some security improvements. I really didn't know what word to use because we don't, we, we are locking our door now. So that is some security that we have at the school board office. But we, you know, our employees there are, you know, kind of looking for, we have a lot of windows, a lot of open areas. So we are looking to try to make some improvements there. If we go back to our A D M for just a moment, we are looking this year, our fiscal year, eighteen, nineteen, to possibly, well, we should definitely finish the year up from what we budgeted. Okay? So that is, that is positive. Not a lot, but maybe about twenty-five kids above what was budgeted for this year. So that will be positive for us. That will be some, some more state funds for us. We won't know that number until about May. So it won't be that much money. But whatever we get, you know, hopefully we'll be able to use to address some of these, these smaller items, maybe here, these one kind of items, like paving or maybe playgrounds, you know, so things like that, whatever the, the needs are there. We have a whole list of maintenance needs, obviously. So we would be addressing those.
I'm sure in all the numbers that you put together, and you do the comparison from our region and then the state levels when you did all your averages, how much more transportation cost do you all have to incur that other localities within your region are within state don't have? Because you start comparing, for example, to Danville, Danville's transportation costs would be, you know, just a small portion of what.
Compared to what we spend on.
So you're spending so much money that can't go to those employees or can't go to.
Exactly.
Big construction.
Yeah, right, right.
Right, what was that, eight hundred dollars?
Eight hundred dollars.
For pupil, eight dollars for pupil for transportation. What other division around fits that kind of money?
Close. I mean, that's, that's.
It's a lot.
Two hundred.
It's a lot of money, exactly.
You know, I, I do have some concerns with some things that you mentioned. Not a relationship with school system is doing with the funding, but in just the problem we have as a whole, as, as a county. You know, obviously, you know, I'm a, I'm a school system and, you know, I think we got a great school system. That's.
I think we've put it down a while ago.
Yeah, just general public knowledge, we got a great school system. The concerns I have is, you know, I do agree, we got to compensate our folks in order to remain competitive. But living this close to the North Carolina line ends up making it even more imperative that we do the best job we can to compensate those folks because of the way the B R S is set up with how they could retire across state lines, borrow state money. And it's easy for them to get a job because they want, they want these people that are coming from systems that are, got these kind of scores. So they'd like to get those. So we're losing some of our best resources at times because that margin's so different. So I find a problem with that. I have a big problem with our folks that are in that thirty-plus category because, you know, not only are they getting underpaid compared to their peer group here, they're getting underpaid for the rest of their lives when they retire because of the way the B R S is set up.
So they really, they really take it on the cheap.
Twice. Because you take someone retires from the school system in Northern Virginia that's been at that top end.
They get double money.
Well, they, not only that, but they can retire there, move to Pittsman County, and they don't take an adjustment.
That's right.
Our person happens to decide to leave, to move to Northern Virginia, they, you know, they, they're not going to make it on what they get. So it's just a, you know, we can't change what that is. But we certainly, I, I appreciate you all looking at the fact of how you lessen that disparity. Mr. Burton brings up a really good point, too. You know, and it's always been the case, and I guess probably in every locality, but certainly here, with the lack of funding, the pure size of the county, that you run over and take care of what's immediately right bound, not paying attention to what's immediate in three or four years. And all of a sudden, it's a budget. We haven't taken care of, we needed to be taking care of both if you could.
Yeah. And the only reason I brought this is because of experience. If we could just ever get a capital improvement budget working, even though we know it's going to take years, where we get a lot of this asking every year, if we knew we could do something in three, four, five years, you could plan it out, repair what you needed to and keep that in place. But this, about a capital improvement budget, we know it tends to be a nineties. Every year or so, we were asked in school, we send this your needs, send this your needs. In my mind, we never got that part to actually have one put in place.
Well, I, I will say this, just having been involved in this for three years, I have a little more insight than I did when I first started H A B. But I think Pittsman County is in a really good situation. I feel very positive about the county. And a lot of that comes from a lot of the things the school system and the issues we took to do the preceding machine programs and all. We're just now starting to see some of the fruits from years of work.
I agree a hundred percent that we went in the right direction.
They're going to continue to take some time for us to get there. We're not going to be there overnight. Just like recently going with Stanton River, riffra there to, to energize, I mean, we're starting to be more broad about what we're doing. But, you know, in, in, in all, all the cards on the table, you do all these wonderful projects. And we did the right thing to stimulate, to stimulate economic development. But you also have to provide them with incentives. So it takes a while to start seeing the fruits of the layer, you know. And Mr. Smithelman and several of us have talked about it many times. There's been several of these things that have, we thought would be part of the budget by this year, that aren't going to be part of the budget by this year. And it just, it's a time.
Yeah, I think so. I understand it. But I'll say this, Josh, it's a refreshing laugh coming here. It feel like you folks are listening and that you are working in the right direction. That we are things. But it's just, it's sometimes, I, personally, we're friends, but I seem to have to pass to make sure we're all aware of the same pace.
And to bring this a little more into light, I mean, that is six point one million dollars of improvement requests or in priorities. And they are definitely our priorities. They're on that list because they, they need to be done. And we just want to, we want to put them on the table. We want to keep them in front of everybody. Want to keep them in front of ourselves as well as keep them in front of you. But if you, right now, and we, we don't know what General Assembly is going to end up doing. But, you know, right now, even between all three versions of the budget that's out there, you know, we're looking at about two million dollars possibly in state money. So, you know, that's that down to about four million dollars, right? If I take out the major capital items here, that brings it down to about one point four million dollars, you know, for operational needs, you know, for the nineteen, twenty budget. So that certainly, in light of numbers, you know, sounds a lot better. So that one point three, one point four million dollars is local money, you know, to help us meet, meet these needs. So.
Just a quick question. Have you identified all your capital improvements? Do you have a breakdown of everything that you need? Not the priorities for everything?
We, we do. We have a list, maintenance has a list. And I think you didn't get that information, yeah.
Do you have a number on that? How much those, the total cost? Because I'm just wondering if it might not be better to take that whole package and do a bond referendum on that money?
Let me.
But that's like counting buildings. Like I, like our yearly list that we get for maintenance is about six to seven million dollars. And that has like these roofs, that's not new buildings or whatever. But it has the roofs, you know, the replacement windows things of that nature.
And I mean, you all have not, have, I mean, look, if you had money, you'd have been giving rates a long time ago. So this is kind of a dumb question, but I think you do that as a function. You haven't had the budget abilities to have a capital improvement design in your own budget to prepare for roofs and all this stuff.
That was our million dollars. I mean, because we, we used to put a roof on every year, you know. But that's six hundred plus thousand dollars. And we, we've cut out a million dollars. So.
I mean, you had to take it somewhere else, right?
Yeah, well, it's immediate here. So I want to make sure they got it up.
One of the things I want to say that I, I want y'all just to think about is, you know, we've declined some in enrollment. But we haven't declined on the south side as much as we have the north side. And that's obvious reasons. Carbon's gone. I mean, you can go back. But economic development is great. But where is most of it occurring?
Right now in Greckie.
No, I was just making, but, but what I'm trying to say is, our southern schools are full, real full. And so just remember, you know, you put another business in, you pick up fifty, a hundred or two hundred employees, and then you got thirty more kids or forty more kids, all of them seem to be going in the south side right now. And, and like Kentucky, you know, we have eight, nine trailers out there right now.
Mr. Dahl, she just told us that we get a hundred and fifty, it don't really matter. We spread them all out.
Well, that's a problem, though.
That's when they're leaving, not when they're coming.
The problem is they all located in one place. They want to go to one school and we need them all over the county. I'm just, I'm just trying to just say that, so y'all understand that it does impact, you know. We got to.
The impact is very difficult based on our geographic location, no doubt about that.
Let me say this, that, and you folks know this, over the last ten years or so, we've lost a lot of state money. And at the school system, we lost six, seven, eight dollars. And that, and, and we made the decision, and I'm sure whatever we did, not to fire people. We made available people to retire early. We didn't lose those disqualified people we need to keep. So we kept them even though we couldn't pay them or what it is. So if you lose seven million dollars in our system, that's a lot of things you cannot do that you were doing. And our staff took up work of others so we could operate. So you can't, when these people are retiring, you can't hire one person to do what some of our people are doing. And I'm sure y'all see the same thing on your side.
Well, I, I definitely, you know, your early retirement option thing that you all did locally has paid huge dividends because you're sending quality people in there to be the substitutes that can continue to education run.
Keeping that knowledge base.
I was told, I was told by another school division, we were crazy. You know, that's, if you do. But if you go look at that school division's performance and you look at our performance, I don't, it was crazy.
If you do the math, if you know how to do the math and understand the system, it saves you money.
Well, I think we did the right thing. I think we proved it on, on our schools.
It's amazing to me, especially comparing our schools to other localities, the amount of funding over the years, the jobs that the schools has done. It continues to do.
It is, it is, it is our people. It's these people back in. It really is.
It's the people that we have employed.
And I want to be honest. If you look, if you look back at, Ms. Castor's gone, you got, got a replacement. You got, Dr. Holland's gone. And we haven't missed a beat. I mean, every time, this is, but since I've been on fifteen years, this is the third group set back here, pretty much. And we haven't missed a beat.
I just want to go on record as Ms. Hancock's been part of all.
Well.
I mean, I know I was so good. You're exactly right. I wasn't on fourth day, I was. She was having, I was on the floor.
However, you can't want to have veteran employees.
It's missing out, it's missing out on the retirement.
They're missing out on their retirement because of our all.
So let me, let me say one more thing.
You have employees.
Y'all, y'all saw the graph where we, where we, where we are with beginning teachers. We made a conscious decision back about seven years ago when our funding was low, in order to get good people coming out of college to change our entry level funding. And we, and we concentrated on that and really ignored the people we had. That's why you see our entry level where it should be and our veterans not, because we were needing to hire people, you know. And, and we made that decision then. So we can get good competitive people back, good teachers back. Now we need to fix that. We really do. So that, just a little history as to why one end is better than the other.
Well, I, I, I really appreciate the comments Mr. Burton made and some others have made over the years about the relationship that the two boards have now. That's really wonderful. And, you know, from just me, my stand, my standpoint, I, I would say, especially having the pleasure of serving this, even I'm the development chair this year, you know, I, I would love to just be able to rubber stamp and say, let's give them every let's give them everything, because it's not, it's certainly not that you don't deserve anything, because you all done a great job. But I would ask that regardless of how things end up coming out, let's remember that we're moving in the right direction and let's keep working together, because I think great things are ahead of Pennsylvania County. I'm really doing passionately believe that.
Well, you get a chance to see what, what's long-term. And this is, you know, we asked this this year, we'll probably ask it again next year, right? But, but as you can, if you can just, well, okay, if you can just, if you can just move towards it, David, and, and work towards getting that. We know it's not gonna happen in one year, no, five years probably. But if you don't work towards, just like Mr. Burton said, if we don't do a capital improvement plan, we lost a chiller this year, a hundred and seventy-five, right, a hundred and eighty-five? Yeah, almost two hundred thousand, and one of our middle schools, twelve, fourteen years old. Now, middle schools, we think of them as being new, right? The life of the chillers are ten, and we, we lost the first one this year, and they're about fourteen years old. So we got three more sitting out there at two hundred thousand dollar liabilities that, are they gonna last a year, two years, five, four years? We don't know. But the buildings aren't new anymore, is what I'm trying to say, you know, now they're starting to get into maintenance, kind of.
I'm just gonna move to the last slide, this, this is a quick, um, this is, I went back and these are budget numbers. So this is our, um, the final budget for fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and then what we're working with for eighteen, nineteen, just to get a little bit of history of where, where the revenues are going. So, you know, we've definitely gone up, but look at seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen. Our budget for seventeen, eighteen, when you take away our, the carryover amount that we had on this year, you know, the operating budget was eighty-nine point eight million dollars. And, you know, that was up from sixteen, seventeen, about two million dollars of that, you know, came from additional state money, okay? So when you go to eighteen, nineteen, you know, we're pretty much flat, because even though, thankfully, we received one point one million dollars in new money from the board supervisors for eighteen, nineteen, we lost a lot of state money because of our A D N change. So even, you know, it's like we can't all be on the same page. And we could be wanting to have one of those great state years and a great local year, you know, all at one time. So we've really just kind of stayed status quo this.
What's your interest rate in getting some of that back?
Twenty-five that much, I mean, twenty-five, twenty-five kids, I mean, we lost over a million dollars to a hundred and sixty-nine kids. So, you know, we're not looking at, at...
What is it, about ten thousand dollars?
Well, nine.
Ten, some, yeah, yeah, so.
But that's federal money and state money and local money combined, so it's not that much. You're just looking at your state. Because that's all that we'll get additionally, you know, we need a state on that. Anyway, that's just a little comparison of where we are, and we wanted to share that with you today. So, and I think that's my last.
How are you in favor of house bill nineteen twenty-one?
What was that then?
Unexpended local funds may be used to finance capital projects.
They always spend their local money.
We would be in state.
They're spending that first off, they're smart, aren't they? They might change and other things start taking, if you use a capital improvement.
You gotta have some left.
Well, we do have lots.
I don't know if that really matters.
Well, we do carry over in local dollars, we certainly use in, um, capital improvements, paving, and, um, water. We have a lot of storage tanks that are having to be replaced, but... We would like unused state money to be distributed amongst all.
No, this, this doesn't have anything to do with the, the school board that made the decision. And one of the things to be proactive are that this board recognized is in the past years, we had twenty million dollars debt up there, but we were kicking the can down the road and not paying anything but the interest on it. And this board was proactive in paying down that debt, about five million dollars, and financing it over fifteen years. And if we hadn't have done that, we would be behind the eight ball even more because the age of the schools, which you mentioned, Mr. Burton, the school board knows, is those, is our buildings age. And if we still have that debt on our books that we have not paid off when it comes time to building.
You'll be fixing bars and stuff, it's all still being paid.
We still be paying principal and interest on twenty million dollars on interest only. Whereas we did take those steps to pay that debt down.
Of course you do that, you could not, you couldn't do it without the, without developing anything, probably that's hurting them.
That's right. So hopefully, and that was a big step in the right direction.
Yeah, very, very much so.
And it was hard for us to pay five billion dollars debt on debt. And, but we did finance it a little over two percent for fifteen years. And I think we in, Kim, what year are we in, like second or third year now?
We recently, it's in sixteen.
So we're in nineteen, so. But at least we headed in the right direction. And I do, I agree with Mr. Warren, I won't rehash what he said, but we've got a lot of things in the hopper that appear to be able to alleviate some of these long-term issues. And it's unfair for the school, for the board supervisors in the county to ask you to develop a C I P program and stick to it when we haven't done it.
Well, I think...
I got the board supervisors, we have a dream sheet, they're gonna get presented to us and nothing ever happens. And I don't know that we...
I think we're gonna have to pardon all capital improvement deals, I really, I do. I think it's, you know, we, one county and they're all our buildings, and I think if truthfully, then all, probably all be under one program. Both combined, y'all's stuff and I was too, I believe.
Really, the, one of the things that's in a long-term budget, a presentation was given to the board supervisors that the revenue would begin in nineteen off the pipeline.
And they've had a year now.
And the initial amounts that we were given as a board supervisors was about one point nine million dollars. And that's dropped, and now the years are pushed out too. And that's, it's nobody's fault in this room, but that's reality. So every time you see in the newspapers somebody strapping himself to a bulldozer over there, just remember that has long-term effects.
We're gonna thank all our money. We appreciate your attention today, gentlemen, and appreciate whatever you can.
Just so you know, all the people that are doing that are from states again.
Yeah, and I'm fond of that, too. But they still end up in our forces, they could, we pay, we pay.
By the way, have any more discussion with the board members, possibly?
I would like to say in conclusion, I am deeply indebted and humbled by the school's performance, you guys. I got my, my principal in here that I still look to, Danville High School. If there was ever a tenacious athlete that was a school principal, there he is right there, Mr. May, I deeply appreciate and respect him, quite a caliber and, and, and a person of Bill Gill. And that's just one among the many that are in Pennsylvania County. I would probably have to tip my hat to each and every one of you guys. We've had some, we're looking for, we've had some near misses in the county, and I would say that some game changers, if they would have came, and so our sites are in place for industry. If, if we get the game changers that we think will be coming, that's gonna add more student body to the, to the coffers, in my opinion. I was gonna ask the question, what would happen if you had three hundred students that migrated in here from different areas? One problem you're gonna have is to bust them, because if you wanna make them everywhere, you'd have to bust them. I can't help them if they're coming to my community, I can't help them.
Well, that's, that's gonna be...
We'll have to work through that. Yeah, so anyway, eleven hundred dollars, I believe, per year per student would go up, or eight hundred dollars, that is. And, and so then you, then your parents would be upset because, why are you putting them up here? So we just wanna kind of... So anyway, those are other problems that we'd be looking at, but I'm saying that to say this, we're waiting and we're trusting that we're gonna have some game changers coming. We, as I said, we've already had two major near misses, and, and we were at the very top to, to receive, and I'm talking game changers for Danville and Pitts, especially Pennsylvania County. So, uh, we're hoping that we're gonna be able to offset those costs and, and spread that to you guys as well, because we know you're, the disparity among our, our school teachers here. And especially your performance, your performance comes in and speaks against us quite often. So we know we, we've got winners on board. The question is, we're not printing money. And I'm writing a letter to Donald Trump, I haven't done it yet, I'm waiting for fifty million dollars. But I can most assure you this, if I got fifty million dollars for this county, I'd have to put it in shoeboxes with Mr. Tre, with Mr. Treasure, because I guarantee it'd be spent up before the year was over. So I'm saying it to say this, we have to make sure that we're, we're smart in our spending, and, and we know, you already know this from the board standpoint, we're behind our educational system. But if I ain't got one more question, then I'm gonna finish. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna finish, is that if we, Mademoiselle, were to look at this that you won't, I'm looking at some of the things that we could say, pigeonhole, what would be, if you wouldn't mind, Dr. Jones, sometime coming back and giving me a list, if bare bones necessity came up so that we can look at other options with other communities in the county and those that are investors as well. If we, if we had to pigeonhole, say, like that, that playground area, I was looking at that. Some other things that we could say, all right, let's try to, my wife says, how do you eat an elephant? And you guys know the answer, I didn't know, but I learned from her. I'm just asking, what are some of the other things, too, that we could do, say, in a roundabout way, outside the box, so to speak, maybe not necessarily come from the county's budget thus far, as well? And you say, well, that sounds to me like you just trying to drop, no, we're not, I'm not trying to do that at all. I'm just saying that if I can't get a hundred percent, at least let me get twenty percent right now, okay? See, that's my take. If I cannot win this and I can't get through the wall, I'm gonna go around that wall, because I'm gonna get through it. That's the way I look at it. So I'm gonna at least say that we were successful in this till a few more months that, that are coming in our way. You understand what I'm saying? So if you would, if you would, if you wouldn't mind, put me together a list of some of the things that we could tackle that would be a little more reasonable for us to look at as a board, especially in this tight, they're always tight, but this year's tight as well, uh, budget, if you would. I appreciate it, I thank every one of you for what you did. If I could, I'd get down and bow down to all of you, but, and I will. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean anything, I want it in my fingers, that's what, I understand, but anyway. Well, we certainly wanna thank y'all for your time, take the time to sit down with us, I think it's, it's always good that we do this. We appreciate you guys because you're winners, you're all winners, and I thank you for what you have done for the county. In fact, as Mr. Warren said, and as Mr. Blackstock has said, you guys have done, education wise, put us in a better position to knock a few home runs in the future. And that come on your discipline and insight, and I thank you for that. Well, we, we do one thing, our board does and our staff does, and it shows, is it's about the kids. And we do everything in our power to make our, for our kids to get their best education, and that's why you see that. I believe that, that truly is what drives us.
All right, anything else?
Can I just add to what Mr. Dawes just said, you all had an opportunity to see the changes that were made that affected the C S A fund. It's not just about the savings, but it's about what's been practiced.
I'll tell you some problems, if they move, it's fantastic. We say, we pitched it to save money, but I can tell you the kids will be in just so.
Well, I mean, I just noticed that that program, the victory program, and the star program, it looked like it today can give us somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars a year, so that's significant.
But I think the kids are getting enough service, which is really what, which was what we wanted.
That's much more important than eight hundred thousand dollars, but when you can do both, that's huge.
In years past, for example, with the children that were replaced, I don't know financially how y'all could have answered the question four or five years ago, but it looks like this year was some savings, perhaps you was able to replace a child seeing a dip in the budget or alone.
She, she does hard, and, and, you know, we have a maintenance pot, right? And the truth is, you, you fix the things that have to be fixed out of that pot, and we've been fortunate enough that we've been able to keep those, but what you, what we hadn't been able to do is put roofs on and things because of, of these other breakages, I mean, that's...
We should probably say, too, that thankfully, there was a lightning storm in the area as well, so we think we're gonna get some insurance assistance as well, I mean, I hate to say that, but, you know.
It was a drag down.
You don't have to say it, any, insurance money is good money.
Well, I mean, we pay premiums, but we pay work, so, so we are going to get some assistance there to make that replacement. However, they are at their life expectancy and, you know, the next one could come at any time without a storm there.
I think it's a good thing that what was being discussed here, I hope this reported in the newspapers, because I know as a board member, I saw a lot of board members get copied, we had a citizenry writer write to us and say, because of the savings in C S A, that we were taking money from children to use in other areas of the budget. In reality, the money was saved and we provided better services to the children.
I'm confident we can sit here and say we provided better services, no problem saying that.
And I know as a board member, I thank y'all for your efforts, and I, and our board.
All right, I declare this meeting adjourned.